And provide comments as possible. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lorimer.
President.
Councilmember Rigby?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Yao?
Here.
Mayor Pla?
Here.
All right, there are no any any closed uh there are no closed session uh items, so then we'll move right on to our invocation, which will be led by Pastor Mark Lee of Annge Point.
Yep. Should I keep this on? Can I? Okay. It's up to me. Okay. Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Rigby, thanks so much for having me, and in particular, uh, it's totally exciting that especially after eight years of raising funds from thousands of church members in the Inland Empire and that just the gracious support of the city council, we are right about to open up our building on the south side of Eastville. It it's a lot because of your guys' support, so thank you so much. When we have that date in hand, we'd love to invite you guys to come out. You would be our honored guests, so. Um, in light of nine eleven, believe it or not, that's coming up in two days, I asked the mayor, instead of a medium-length prayer, if it'd be okay if I read a very, very short story about nine eleven, and then said a short prayer. So here's my favorite story about nine eleven. Probably an hour into United Flight ninety-three's scheduled trip from Newark to San Francisco, the thirty-eight passengers aboard the seven fifty-seven realized that they were being hijacked. The terrorists commandeered the cockpit and the passengers were hurt were herded to the back of the plane. And shoved together were four remarkable men who didn't much like being shoved around. One was Mark Bingham, who helped Cal win the ninety-one and ninety-three National Rugby Championship. Six foot five, rowdy and fearless, he once wrestled a gun from a mugger's hand late at night on a San Francisco street. One was medical research executive Tom Burnett. At thirty-eight, he was a standout quarterback for Jefferson High. One was businessman Jeremy Glick. Thirty-one, at six foot two, he was a ninety-three collegiate judo champ in the two-hundred-and-twenty-pound class and a high school all-state soccer player. His wife Liz said, as long as I've known him, he was the kind of man who never tried to be the hero but always was. One was thirty-two-year-old sales manager Todd Beamer, who was a Christian and played third base and shortstop for three seasons at Wheaton College. After the events have transpired, the rugby player picked up the airphone and called his mother. The judo champion called his wife to say goodbye to her and their twelve-week-old daughter. And in the conversations they had, they soon found out that that the that two other planes had cleaved the World Trade Center. Now Beamer, Bingham, Burnett, and Glick realized that their jet was a guided missile. The four apparently had come up with a plan, and right before this heroic action, Burnett told his wife, I know we're gonna die, and some of us are gonna do something about it. And nobody alive is quite sure about what happened next. But we have good reason to believe that they rushed the cockpit. Flight ninety-three never made it to Washington, but instead dove dived into a field about eighty miles southeast of Pittsburgh. All passengers and crew perished. No one on the ground was killed. In the heart of San Francisco, a memorial grew bouquet by bouquet to honor the memory of a rugby player who wasn't afraid. In Wyndham, Liz Glick said, I think God just had a larger purpose for him. In Cranberry, New Jersey, a baby grew inside Lisa Beamer, their third child. And hearing about her husband's heroics, she said that it made her life worth living again. All four men received the Presidential Medal of Freedom, the highest award a civilian can receive. Why don't you bow your head and pray with me? Father God, um, what we know from history, Lord, is that, Lord, that you always protect us, and that you always bring about good even from evil. And so right now, we also face trying times from a pandemic and not only a global pandemic, but an economic pandemic and a mental health pandemic. And although things may seem dangerous on the outside, what we know from history, Lord, is that if you took care of us once, then you can take care of us again. So, Father, we pray for your protection, we pray for your wisdom, and we pray for your guidance upon our city. Lord, we love you so much. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Very appropriate. We appreciate that. Well, now be led by our pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Rigby.
Will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember. Number seven, I'm number seven additions and revisions. The council may only add an item to the agenda after making a finding out that there is a need to take immediate action on the item and that the item came to the attention of the agency subsequent to the posting of the agenda. And actually adding an item to the agenda requires a majority vote of the council. Mark, is there any Eastville staff member has requested to pull or sorry, to add any item?
No, Mayor.
All right. Uh, I will give a little moment for my our council members and also those ones that are remote, if they would like to revise or add anything. All right, seeing there's none, we will move to item eight point one. This is into our presentations and announcements, and this will be the introduction of new City of Eastville employees, and this will be presented by our city manager, Mr. Brian Jones.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Uh, tonight, I'm pleased to introduce Melissa Manzo, um, who, uh, you approved her position in June tenth with the adoption of the budget. Our talent attraction and special projects manager and her team, uh, have been hard at, uh, filling all those positions that you authorized to transition our contract staff into, uh, in in-house positions, which is saving us, uh, hundreds of thousands of dollars, i- if not close to a million dollars. So I just wanted to, uh, um, highlight that, uh, transition that we are doing as a city as a whole, and Melissa is is an integral part of that. Melissa brings to the team over ten years of experience in customer service and account management. Her experiences include front counter insurance sales, account management, and land use technician in the County of Riverside's planning department. During her time with the County of Riverside, she was able to gain knowledge regarding development up in the unincorporated areas, all while working closely with the department's deputy director, principal planners, and other planning staffs such as biologists and archaeologists. Melissa has a Bachelor of Science in Health Administration and Management from the University of Phoenix and plans to pursue her master's degree this upcoming year. During her free time, she we she won't have that anymore, but during her free time, she used to enjoy being a supermom for a five-year-old daughter, Haley Grace, he- heavy weightlifting and stand-up comedy. So I can't wait to experience the stand-up comedy. Uh, um, please welcome Melissa to the City of Eastville as a planning technician. So so we always take a picture with the staff so we know what you look like when you started here and then when. So it's a.
Absolutely. Did you say you in heavy weightlifting?
Yeah.
Very awesome. All right. Very interesting. Very cool.
Brendan likes Brendan likes worked out twice a day.
We actually just that we actually have a one of our Eastville residents who owns Eastside Athletics. She actually holds the world record for women over forty on the clean and jerk and combined. So the snatch and clean and jerk. Yeah, so there you go. Melissa, you want to come up? We'll take a picture with you? Well, we know you picked a good place. This is a great city to work for, and we're we're very proud of the culture we created. I know you'll just in the few moments that Brian has discussed much, I'm sure you'll fit and rank to the continuity of what we have going on here. So congratulations and welcome. All right. We will now move to item eight point two, which is the proclamation for National Preparedness Month, and if Fire Marshal Steve Swartout, did I pronounce that right? Steve Swartout?
Yes.
All right. That is. All right. The one thing I do like about the title of this proclamation is and it's it's very appropriate for National Preparedness Month. It's it's titled as Prepared, Not Scared. So whereas National Preparedness Month is a nationwide effort sponsored by the Federal Emergency Management Agency's Ready Campaign and is designed to encourage Americans to take simple steps to prepare for emergencies in their home, businesses, and communities. And whereas emergency preparedness is the responsibility of every citizen, and each person can take a few simple steps such as creating an emergency supply kit, creating a family disaster plan, and staying informed. And whereas the City of Eastville recognizes the need to increase public awareness concerning the importance of preparing for emergencies and to persuade individuals to take action. Couple more whereas here. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the city council of the city of the City of Eastville, on behalf of its citizens and staffs, does hereby recognize September twenty twenty as National Preparedness Month.
Mayor and council, i- if you didn't see social media today, we, uh, some of his brothers and sisters that are out in deployment throughout the state of California have been sending us some great pictures and videos, and our our incredible communications team put together a cul- culmination of some of the videos that are 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 firefighters that are our local Cal Fire firefighters that are deployed throughout the state, whether it's the Lightning Complex fire, whether it's the El Dorado fire, wh- whether it's the, um, the Creek Fire up by Huntington and Shaver Lakes, uh, um, where people were trapped and being, uh, Chinook and Blackhawk helped helicopter out of there. Uh, um, uh, they're sending us pictures of of them going into the harm's way with their flames or their two, three, five hundred feet up in the air, um, and putting them out. And they said that they've never seen fires that are acting like this behavior up there. But, uh, they sent us some great videos. So if you if you haven't been on our social media, Facebook or or Instagram, uh, there's some great video on there to to highlight some of the heroic efforts that are going on with our local firefighters and where they're deployed throughout the state of California. Keep in mind, Station twenty-seven and thirty-oneers fully staffed in case any of our residents need it, but some of our local, uh, firefighters are have been deployed throughout the state of California.
Thank you also, again, for that. It's it's amazing what your what your team and your brothers and sisters are doing out there. It's it's scary. It's I I have a couple of friends out there and they've they've showed me certain videos of what's going on, and it's it's kind of mind-blowing if if you're not out there and seeing it firsthand. So, but thank you. All right. We will now there are no agency partner updates, uh, for this meeting, so then we'll move to item number ten, which is public comment. Any member of the public may address the council on items within the council's subject or matter jurisdiction, but which are not listed on the agenda during public comments. However, no action may be taken on matters that are not part of the posted agenda. We request comments made on the agenda be made part made, sorry, be made at the time the item is considered, and that comments be limited to three minutes per person. If you wish to submit a public comment, please email the City Clerk's Office at East at cityclerk@eastvillca.gov. Staff will monitor emails to the best extent possible during the meeting, and comments will be made part of the record. Once public comment has been received via email, comments will then be read into the record with a maximum allowance of three minutes per individual comment. If a comment is received after the agenda item is heard but before the close of the meeting, the comment will be included as part of the record of the meeting but will not be read at the meeting. If you are joining using the GoToWebinar platform, raise your hand item or icon now, and the clerk will call you when it is your turn. We'll wait a few seconds. Mark, is there anybody that's asked to make public comment?
Yes, Mayor, we have two comment cards, uh, in person and one via email. We'll start with the ones in person. First one is Shauna Scoggins.
My name is Shayna Scoggins, and I apologize, this is so new to me and I'm nervous, but I wanted to do this. Um, my husband's name is David Scoggins, and yesterday morning, he was pulled over while doing his daily run, uh, by not one police car, not two, but three police cars in our neighborhood. The first police officer asked why he was going to people's cars and tried to break in, and then she said, as well as another officer that pulled up shortly after, that someone in the neighborhood called and said he was trying to break into people's cars by pulling on the doors and trying to jump in and out of the cars. Let me give you a little info on my husband. My husband runs every day, just about every day, barefoot. His longest run has been thirteen miles. He has a YouTube page called Barefoot Runner People. Yes, this is a thing. He also currently is in his twenty-sixth year as a U.S. Army soldier and is a God-fearing man. He also loves to barbecue, do funny YouTube skits, and so many more things. I want to introduce him to our neighborhood in Eastville just in case someone else decides to call and lie on him. He was accused and questioned several times. By the way, it's all recorded. I hurt for my husband because he did not deserve this. My goal tonight is to bring awareness that the community continue to be educated as well as the police department have more training. Accusations should not come before questioning. Get to know your community. I am hopeful that this will bring more unity in this community. Let's take a moment to get to know each other a little bit more. I too can be guilty of walking by someone and don't that I don't know and just going about my day. I pray that those who made the call on my husband read the post that I've made earlier and hear this message. We can change by lifting up our heads, opening up our eyes, and saying hello to our neighbors instead of just passing by. Having an open heart, accepting people who may not look like us, and constantly being open for change or diversity. I just hope I expect a change. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Shayna, for those comments. I assume you're David as well? Thank you, David, as well. Did they have public comments? Perfect. Thank you, David.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for having me. And there's not much more. She basically said what I had to say is just the, uh, the incident when I was running and the cars pulled up behind me. Um, it was just me trying to hold my composure together. Um, there's no fault to the sheriff. They they were very professional in how they approached me, but the questioning of the accusations, the ac- the accusation, hope I'm saying that right, the accusation saying that I was breaking into people's cars, and also stating that I had a felony, because after they questioned me and found out that I actually had did nothing, then it's like they were trying to find other things that they can ask me questions about. So they left the fact that I they thought I was breaking into vehicles, and they went into the fact, oh, you have a a a warrant for your warrant for a ticket, and did you take care of that? And I said, I paid for that. So I called the Sheriff Department this morning, and I called the court, and they said I have no warrant or anything. So I was very concerned about that, and I was in shock. I did not know what to do with that, and I just want there to be some type of some type of, I don't know, program or something to help with the communication with the sheriffs or anything like that. Um, as I say again, nothing against the sheriffs, how they were questioning me, it's just the quality of the questions that were given to me. Thank you.
Thank you, David, for your time. Do is your information by chance up there, your number, your phone number, by chance on there? I plan on giving you guys a call if you don't mind. We we've put together, I say we, my myself and our council members have put together what's called an inclusionary task force, kind of in light of this kind of the issues that we've been facing, and I need to greatly apologize for that. Should never happen. Um, and so, uh, I'd like to call you kind of more details about it. It's 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 several leaders in our community that represent, whether it's people of religious faith, um, Pastor Mark Lee, he's he's one of those people as well, uh, people that are our business community, our development community, um, our school district, you name it, from every gamut, and we're all kind of working together to kind of create better, um, better relationships, not only to people of whether it be people of color, but also to have better understanding of law enforcement as well. And so, uh, would love to give you a call about that and then see if that's something you guys would like to participate in with us. Thank you.
Next comment card is from Keith White. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I would like to take this time. Please remember to get your flu shots that are available now. I already got mine because the coronavirus and the flu, we really need to be careful this winter. Also, I would like to remind you that our Northwest Team Now meeting will be meeting tomorrow at nine AM by virtual online. Please be safe out there, and we know we're all in this together. Thank you for your time.
Mark, was the last public comment?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. All right, we'll now move to item number eleven, the Consent Calendar. All matters on the Consent Calendar are considered routine and are to be approved with one motion unless a council member, staff member, or a member of the public requests separate action on on a specific item. Mark, is there any staff member or member of the public that requested to pull an item?
Uh, yes, Mayor, we have a comment card for item eleven point six.
Okay. Councilmembers, are there any item that you would like to pull? Can I give you guys a moment? All right, if not, can I get a motion for the approval eleven point one, eleven point five, and eleven point seven? To the end, because it's actually not on my, I think there's eleven point seven the last one? Okay.
Second. Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Rigby?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Yao?
Yeah.
Mayor Pla?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Okay, then we will move to eleven point six.
Yeah, so I'll I'll just go ahead with the comment card for this one. Good evening, that's from Keith White. A good evening, Mayor and City Council. I just want to thank you, uh, for this. It means a lot to me and the whole residents of Eastville. Great job for getting this. There are some residents who can't make county council meetings. Thank you. Have a wonderful evening. Keith White.
Can I get it approved for eleven point six? A motion approved? So moved.
So moved. Second.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Rigby?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Yao?
Yeah.
Mayor Pla?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
All right. We're moving right along to item twelve point one, which is our public hearing. At this time, we'll conduct one public hearing item. Actually, that's not true. We have two public hearing items. Uh, we will be getting two public hearing items. If you would like to speak before the city council tonight, please email the City Clerk's Office at cityclerk@eastvillca.gov. If you are joining using the GoToWebinar Raise Your Hand platform during the public comment portion, and the clerk will call you when it is your turn. Following the staff report and opening up the public hearing, I will ask the city clerk to read any comments that have been submitted electronically and call those who would like to speak. We will begin with the public hearing item, which is twelve point one, the Limonai Gap Closure Project, City Project number nine three two zero six, a request for consideration of the Project California Environmental Quality Act draft, initial study with mitigated negative declaration. And this will be presented once again by Mr. Jason Kilbrue.
Thank you, Member, Member, Mayor, Members of the Council, Jason Kilbrue, Planning Manager. Um, this item before you, um, is should be familiar. Um, the concept for the roundabout and the design, uh, was presented in October twenty nineteen to you. Uh, the result of that is now the, um, this phase of the capital project, which is the, um, environmental analysis, um, pursuant to the SEQA California Environmental Quality Act guidelines. What we have before you is a request to, um, adopt the, um, mitigated negative declaration as the determination for the environmental findings, as well as the appropriate mitigation that have, um, resulted in this project with the incorporated mitigation having, um, no effect on the, um, uh, the environment, um, based off of those SEQA guidelines as previously mentioned. Um, with that, I'm available for any questions. Um, and we do have the consultant, uh, available for any, um, questions as well, if the council has has any or the community has any. Um, and that concludes, uh, staff's presentation.
Thank you, Jason, for that. Mark, we're gonna we're allowing, is there any public comment first off? That, uh, anybody from the public that wanted to make comment?
No, Mayor.
Okay, we'll allow a few seconds to go by just again, just in case there's anybody that want to use the Raise Your Hand platform. All right, then we will turn over to council discussion, and we'll start off with Councilman Lorimer.
I'd like to move approval.
Back then.
There we go. I have.
Jason, you did a great job.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Rigby?
Aye.
Do we, real quick before, sorry, do we have to close the public hearing on this before we vote on it?
Yes.
I think he.
Yes.
Yeah.
Did he? I don't actually ever technically opened the public hearing either, so. I did ask for, okay, well, we'll officially, let's do this. We'll make it official. We're gonna officially close the public hearing. We got a motion, we have a second on the floor, and then we can go to vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Yao?
Yeah.
Mayor Pla?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
So I'm not much for formality, so I I apologize. And in fact, because I remember this one got rescheduled from last week, knowing council members' motion, they'd have been like, man, we should have done this two weeks ago. Yeah. All right, well, now move to item twelve point two. Uh, the General Plan Amendment, Change of Zone, Conditional Use Permit, and Major Development Review for Self-Storage Facility. And this again will be presented by Mr. Jason Kilbrue.
Thank you, Mem- uh, Mayor, Members of the Council, Jason Kilbrue, again, um, here to present item twelve point two, um, referred to as the Chandler Self-Storage Project or PLN one nine, uh, two hundred forty-seven. It's a request for a general plan amendment, change of zone, conditional use permit, and major development review. So the project site is located, um, in the westerly, uh, portion along Chandler. We call it the Chandler Corridor, um, as described in the general plan, and then also just commonly referred to as a Chandler Corridor, um, in just Eastville language. Uh, it's circled in the, um, or oval, I guess, in the blue. Um, and then the project area, it's the area that is, um, what I would call the, uh, one of the few, um, um, remnant pieces of of historic Eastville prior to incorporation. Um, and so there is going to be, um, most likely some, um, development opportunities that this council most likely will see in the future, both through the Eastville twenty forty plan as well as, um, private development ventures. So the the project site, the actual construction site, and I say construction site, because, um, later in the presentation, you'll see there are some components of the project that extend beyond this red boundary, um, is along Chandler, so north of Chandler and west of Selby. Uh, it's approximately four point one acres, um, and it's currently improved with vacant land and some scattered, um, low-density residential. It's also surrounded, um, on on most sites by low-density residential as well as a flood control facility to the north. So as previously mentioned, the, um, project is proposing approval of a general plan amendment, um, to change the existing general plan land use designation from loaded city, um, residential to commercial retail, and accompany change of zone to be consistent with that general plan from agriculture to, um, general commercial. Approval of a conditional use permit for a self-storage facility within that commercial zone, and approval of a major development review, um, for the development of approximately hundred and fifty-eight thousand square feet of building. Um, throughout the presentation, I'll refer to this as a project or the, um, self-storage project. Uh, and it's important to note that on July fifteenth, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended that the city council approve this project. So as previously mentioned, um, the makeup of the the total square footage is approximately a hundred and fifty-eight square feet. This would be, um, your typical storage units. Um, we also had a, um, uh, sit down with the applicant to really try to, um, add some uniqueness, um, to the site, and one of the things that came out of that, um, that dialogue was the, um, conversation of having some what we call contractors or flex units, um, that'll be incorporated into the project. The idea behind that would be for kind of those, um, those low-volume, low-traffic, um, type businesses that are probably a little bit, uh, outside of the home occupation, um, permit type, uh, threshold, but don't really elevate to to someone needing to go into like a fully-developed commercial center. Um, so those would be included, um, and then on top of that, there would be a caretaker with, um, providing security and onsite management as well as an office. So the general plan amendment, as previously mentioned, is loaded city residential in order to facilitate the development. Um, the project, um, is proposing commercial retail as a land use designation. The, uh, general plan, the existing general plan speaks of the Chandler Corridor as being. The, uh, general plan, the existing general plan speaks of the Chandler Corridor as being an area of opportunity for change. Um, and contemplates future land uses that include commercial. So with these policies and goals, um, they, they fully support, um, this general plan amendment request, uh, to facilitate the project. To make the general plan, uh, amendment a little bit more worthwhile, um, there are some existing sites directly, uh, a- adjacent and also across the street Selby, um, that are currently zoned commercial but have a residential general plan, uh, land use designation. So the thought process behind this was to bring, um, some of these properties into full consistency, uh, where their zoning and their general plan would actually match together. So as mentioned multiple times, uh, change of zone is being proposed. This is just to can be consistent with the general plan and also facilitate the self-storage facility. As you can see, those properties to the red that we included with the general plan amendment have already been zoned commercial. The project has been, uh, evaluated through the zoning code and municipal code for all applicable development standards. And it does achieve all of those, um, standards and, and exceed some of those standards, um, uh, to, to help the self-storage facility make those findings for the conditional use permit to be approved. The project has been, um, adequately designed with landscaping along Chandler Street. And also will have, um, perimeter wall, either a block wall, um, or a building wall, as well as, um, some security fencing and security detail that has been included into the conditions of approval. The next few slides are just some, uh, overall elevations of, of the project site and, uh, the materials and colors that are being proposed. And what probably depicts the development a little bit better is this project rendering on Chandler looking both east and west. The, um, the main building where you see the signage, that would be the caretaker in office. And with that, staff recommends that the city council, uh, take the following actions. That they adopt a resolution approving a mitigated negative declaration, a general plan amendment, uh, to change the existing general plan land use designation on the project site to commercial retail. A conditional use permit to allow the proposed, uh, self-storage facility. And a major development review for the development of the self-storage facility. As well as the introduced read-by-title and wayfeeder reading of ordinance to change the project's existing zoning from agriculture to general commercial zoning. And that concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions, and the project applicant is also in person for any questions.
Thank you, Jason, for that. Mark, is there been made any public comment on this?
Um, nothing through email, but we do have one individual who's raising their hand.
Okay, then we will allow that, uh, we'll allow that individual to, is, uh, obviously they're writing up something correct, or they, can they make it?
They're gonna speak through the system.
Perfect, let's allow that person to come on through.
Yilda?
Hi.
Omen?
Yes, that's me. Thank you. Thank you for getting my phone call. Um, yes, I'm, I'm, I'm just into the new community coming up for the storage unit. And I just wanna let, uh, let you guys know that Garrett was very, um, very consistent in trying to reach us and let us know what the update coming up and everything. And, uh, um, I tried to be very helpful as well to him. And I'm very happy that his persistence and his dedication has, uh, got to this far, got him this far. And, uh, I'm, I'm really happy that my, uh, two, uh, labs turned into a commercial as well. And hopefully this will bring new, uh, new investors to our community and, um, make it happen and do something beautiful as well there. I started cleaning it up and I've been talking to Mr. Jason, uh, um, in regards to what to do and what not to do. And so I'm very happy to, to be of your assistance. And, uh, I'm very happy that, uh, Mr. Gossett already has, uh, his hard work and dedication coming through and, and congratulations. Thank you very much. No questions. I just wanted to say, uh, I'm very proud of him.
Thank you, Yilda. Appreciate that. Is there, uh, any, just, just wait a few more seconds before we close the public hearing?
No additional hands have been raised.
Yeah, actually, the applicant would, I think we'll allow the applicant to speak if you want. Yeah, Garrett, if you wanna come on up and, and speak?
Even Brandon, even Todd, rest of the council members, thanks for the time tonight. Good to see you guys again. Thank you, Jason, for all the help, um, throughout this process. You are a huge asset to us. Um, I don't want to repeat too much of what Jason already went over, but I thought it was important to highlight a couple of points. We will have a manager that lives onsite at this property if approved. Um, in owning and operating these facilities, we know that that's a, it's a big asset to the facility, not only in security, but because somebody lives there, they're very invested in the business. They're very invested in the clientele. Um, that's one thing I wanted to bring up. Um, the contractor suites, uh, as we call it, the flex space. That was something that we worked with planning to diversify this project, so it's not just your traditional self-storage. Um, we've seen this work in other cities in Southern California and think that it would be an excellent addition for small business owners to utilize in your city. Um, you know, these are a small hundred-square-foot office paired with an adjacent six hundred fifty-plus-square-foot office warehouse kind of storage area. We, um, target tradespeople. You might look at your electricians, your plumbers, your landscapers, something like that. Somebody that typically works out in the field, but doesn't need a big office space, but somewhere where they can process paperwork outside of their home, store material, that sort of thing, park a vehicle. Um, we think that that could be a, a great addition, as far as we know, that doesn't exist in the city. Um, we would be offering a range of units. That's climate controlled, that's non-climate controlled. Forty-one percent of the units are drive-up. Those are the most coveted, convenient type of unit for users to use. Um, no elevators, uh, i- it's a really, we, we put a lot of thought and a lot of work into coming up with something that we feel really convenient and easy to use for, for the residents of Eastville. Um, I think it's really important to mention community outreach. We know that this, uh, residents of Eastville are really involved in their community. And so we made a tremendous effort to get this project out in front of residents early and to stay on their ra- radar throughout the process. We mailed letters to residents within a thousand-foot radius of the property on, uh, four different occasions back in September, when we had a conceptual idea of this, again in October, in January, and most recently in June. Um, we hosted a community meeting digitally on the Zoom platform on June thirtieth, for which a few residents in the area attended. And, uh, for us, most importantly, we walked the neighborhoods surrounding the property. Um, we walked the Chandler Ranch neighborhood to the south across Chandler. We knocked on doors. I, I know that that's a, an iffy thing during this COVID time, but we felt it was important to get, um, face-to-face with people and, and talk with them. Um, the feedback that we received from people is that they had received our letters. Overall, they were fairly indifferent about the project going in. They did have some questions in regards to traffic, noise, hours of operation and moving, moving trucks. And we were able to talk to that, talk with them about the logistics of how this property would operate, um, and, and blend in with the neighborhood. So, um, you know, we're, we are a, we've been in the self-storage business for twenty years. We understand what it takes to own and operate these facilities. They're generally very low-impact. There's a manager that lives onsite. There's a lot of security. There's few daily visitors. Just the nature of it is that it's very low-impact. We, we would be the builder and we would be the long-term operator. We have every intention of owning this asset long-term. So we really look forward to having the opportunity to be part of the community and, uh, thank you guys a lot. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Garrett. Appreciate it. Again, before we close public comments, just wanna make sure there's, is there anybody that decided to raise their hand for a public comment?
No, Mayor.
All right, we'll officially close the hearing, and we will turn to council for discussion. And I will actually start with Mayor Pro Tim Yao first, if there's any questions. All right, well, in case our audio's up, we'll, we'll turn over to Councilmember Rigby.
I'm coming, coming. I was actually changing Kaden's diaper, so.
You're good, you're good.
But yes, uh, yes, I, I was actually gonna say, thank, uh, thank you so much for, for your effort. I definitely noticed that, and not only your persistence, but also your willingness to, to, uh, um, you know, to really tailor the project to what, what's best for our community and for our city. And I really like the idea of, um, having office spaces. And I, I think that's something that was definitely in our city. But, and I do have a question, um, question slash concern, but it's, it's by, again, by no means it's your project. It's actually just more of like the city development. And this is something that maybe the city manager could answer. Um, so on Hellman, it's only one lane each way, so two lanes in total. And I was wondering, as, as we're seeing more development coming along, as we have Rondo Elementary School, even though it's not really, um, you know, we don't really have students attending right now, um, but with that being said, with everything that's going on, with all the development that's going on, how are we planning on expanding the roadway? Because I think that roadway almost on the same stage. And we, I see how the traffic has increased over the years. And I would imagine that with all, all the new develop, development of potential zones that's coming in, we're gonna see more and more traffic. So do we have any plan on, um, potentially expanding that from two lengths to four lengths?
That's a great question, Councilmember Yao. Um, the, the answer is, yeah, most roadways are widened as development occurs. Um, and, uh, that bor- that roadway Hellman is on the border between the city of Chino and the city of Eastville. And, uh, just today, uh, we had a collaborative, uh, meeting with the city of Chino on Hellman, uh, as, um, the preserve is being built out. And they have many, uh, roadways that they will be widening. Uh, the roadway that you're talking to the south of Chandler, past Rondo, all the way down, uh, to, uh, Archibald and the, and the, and the bridge, i- is a road that goes through, uh, Orange County Flood Control. Uh, um, and so, uh, they own a lot of that land around there for the Prado Basin. Uh, a- and some of that land eventually will be developed as it's outside the basin, but they needed to buy the whole parcel or take the whole parcel. Um, and so, uh, one thing that we are gonna be doing is sitting down with the Orange County Flood Control and identifying what they're gonna be developing and how those roadways could, improvements could be made. Um, but part of it is in the city of Chino and part of it is in the city of Eastville. And, uh, and, and the answer is yes, we are having collaborations on that. Um, uh, a- a- and there's really three agencies involved. It's Orange County Flood Control, the city of Chino, and the city of Eastville, along with two transportation commissions. San Bernardino County, County Ca- Transportation Commission and, and RCTC in Riverside County. So, uh, um, there's a number of agencies that are involved along this area. So, um, we are starting conversations, uh, to identify, um, what is our plan of attack, uh, for implementing infrastructure out there. But, yeah, I don't wanna make any assertions that anything's gonna be happening, uh, quickly. Uh, we're just beginning the conversations now.
Sounds good. Thank you so much, Brian.
Thank you, Kaden.
All right, Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Jason, for this presentation, and thank you, uh, Garrett, for all that you've done in this. Just to echo what Mayor Pro Tim said, we, we appreciate your efforts and we appreciate all the work that you've done, all the boots-to-the-ground work. Um, and I know, especially during a time like this, it is hard. It's hard for you to do it. It's hard to be receptive. It's hard for the, the neighbors in this area to see you out and kinda wonder, hey, should you really be out? Door-knocking right now, but we truly appreciate it. Um, our, our residents wanna be informed with what's happening and they wanna have their input heard, so this is, uh, very, very helpful that you've done this. I do have a couple of questions. First question I have, can we go back to slide seven, please? On this slide, slide seven, it shows the change, the general plan change. It shows that we're leaving a couple of parcels in that, that block there as low-density residential. Is that correct?
For, for now, um, Council, um, Mayor Rigby. So the reason for that is the property owners. So the ones that we were able to change, we require with the application and property owner authorization. Those are the property owners that were available and willing to be in, included as part of this, this effort. Um, through the, uh, Eastville twenty forty general plan, um, update, we will be evaluating land uses along Chandler, uh, and subsequently we'll have zoning that would be consistent. So, um, while it may remain low-density residential, um, in, in the now, um, and they weren't included with this project, I could anticipate that these, these types of lots would be evaluated as part of the Eastville twenty forty for, um, any type of change.
Okay, thank you, 'cause yeah, I, I agree with this change, but I don't agree with leaving those parcels. It's one of those things that it's kind of, especially the one right in the middle. You have it surrounded by, by the, um, commercial retail. And then you have the low-density right in the middle, so whatever we can do to, um, hopefully in the, the general plan twenty forty that we can get that cleaned up and all consistent and, um, clean there. Regarding this project specifically, again, Garrett, thank you, um, this is your second round with us. Thank you for coming back. Um, no offense to your first project, but I think this project is a lot better. I think this is a great project. This is what our city needs. Our city needs those flex units. I think the storage component is gonna be great. I think the location is great for this. Unfortunately, before, the other location, we won't go into details, but it wasn't as, um, i- is, is good as this location is. I think this is an ideal location. Um, it's, uh, not gonna impact the, an immediate neighborhood there. Um, it's, I, I'm in favor of it. Like I said, there are a few questions that I do have, just clarification things. Um, and for full disclosure, Garrett and I have talked a couple of times on the phone, previous project, we met in person and talked. Um, so just for full disclosure, we have talked about some of these things in the past. Regarding the fence, uh, or, I'm sorry, regarding the, the boundary on the west side of the project there, where it is gonna be meeting potential residential, you have a twenty-foot setback there. Just to confirm that area is gonna be landscaped and, um, there's gonna be a, a space there that is not, I guess, fully in the enclosure of the storage facility itself. Um, and my concern is, is that that may be neglected, which I hope that it won't be. So in order for it to not be neglected, I would like to see, I don't know if there's anything that the, that your design has, but to see some sort of lighting and/or cameras that are a- along that side there, so that it can be, um, even if it's motion deten- motion-censored lighting, so that as law enforcement drives by, if anyone's back there walking, that they can see that. With that being said, um, I'd also like to see that front gate or that front, whatever is there, to be not a solid, uh, solid gate, but to be some sort of wrought iron or something there so that, once again, law enforcement can see down that entire area and that it's not an enclosed, um, just a dark area there. So, um, I don't know if those are, eh, and I, I should have asked this before we closed the public hearing. But I don't know if those are things that, that you would agree to and that if we could condition just for those minimal things to happen. And I think es- especially if it does end up being low-density residential there, if it stays that way, um, these are safety concerns for those current residents as well as future, whatever happens to that area. And I think it's, uh, for the most part, very minimal to request. But I don't know if, if it's something that, um, your team would be willing to do, um, for that area there, and I don't know.
Eric, do I need to officially reopen the public hearing?
All right.
And public hearing's reopened.
And Council, Councilmember Rigby, Jason Kilbrue, I pulled the slide back up that shows the landscape plan. So exactly what you're describing is, is how, um, Garrett's team has designed it. So the area that you're, you're talking about, the entire site, um, will be, um, enclosed. And so if that, that separation area actually would have a measuring wall that would, would serve as that buffer. So it would be, um, internal to them. Um, and then they would need to also maintain that because it is part of their water quality system. And so there is gonna be ongoing maintenance or else, uh, Mr. Gossett will have a problem. Um, and then- Um, and then going to the uh, let me pull up the, I think the rendering may show it. So if you look at the rendering, um, so that's exactly your comment of. Um, o- o- on Chandler Street, giving law enforcement an ability to look down those drive aisles, um, those gates. Locality gates actually would be wrought iron, looking on both of those drive aisles, um, so we have addressed the we we. Those those specific concerns and included those in the project design.
So the area that I'm concerned about, if you look at that rendering where it says view looking east. If you go to the far east of that rendering, on the outside of that green wall that has the green bush there. If you go to the far left of that, there's twenty feet there from the edge of that wall, or the edge of that building, over to the property line.
Yes, so there would be a wall, so there there's, it's kinda hard to see that dash line basically serves also as a wall. Um, and then that's their 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 engineering, so that's their their water quality. Um, and so there's gonna be ongoing maintenance in in that particular area. We can add some lighting if that is your desire, we got some some lighting as part of their security plan and make sure that's incorporated in the conditions.
Oh, correct, yeah, from the street there, so you can have the block wall. Basically how it is designed from the um the rendering there. But to the left of that rendering, have wrought iron instead of the solid block wall. Just because I think it would be a lot easier for, that could be a dark area, and it could be a problem area, people could start. Camping back there, and I think it's just easy for law enforcement to drag by there, throw their light down there. Utilize the lights on the building, whatever, rather than having a block wall that hides a lot. And I know the other addition to it is is having the onsite manager there that's probably gonna be daily.
Yeah.
Patrolling around and seeing if anyone's out there, but I just, I think for for law enforcement to have. Um, their ability to quickly drive down there and see something, or even for the the manager to quickly drive down there and see something, I just think it's. I don't wanna leave a dark area right there, especially next to a residential area.
Understood, so we can we can address that uh in Mr. Gossett's defense, the way our zoning code development standard is specific to self-storage facilities. It says where there is not an entry gate, it shall be a masonry wall, so. Um, if that's your desire, we can work with them on that design, um, but that's the reason why they designed it that way.
Councilmember Rigby, another option might be just to have some security, cuz I'm sure there's security cameras around this. And he puts a couple of security cameras that his onsite person can see down there. And then if his onsite person needs to call law enforcement, then they can get back there. Um, since they're gonna have twenty-four-hour onsite, that that might be a way, and I'm pretty sure with storage facilities. That there's already a s- security camera system as part of it, so. If I know, if I know Garrett's projects and the way he designs them, he likes to keep them as safe as possible and he doesn't want anything back there.
And if I can add, just from a development standpoint, we'll we'll put that wrought iron fence in there you're requesting, that's, we we wanna be able to see down there as well. If we're parking out on the street or coming in the driveway, we wanna be able to look down there, so that won't, you know, if we can work with planning. That section won't be a block wall for that setback, so that we can see down the building. We'd have cameras back there, if you wanna add security lighting, we typically don't put it in the setback area, just. Animals can trigger it at night, it's starting to bother the neighbors, but if that's something you wanna see, that's not a problem with us whatsoever, we would have a camera on each end pointing down, just so that. From the office, you can see what's going on, we don't, last thing we want is people camping out on the side of our property.
Thank you, and I I'd be willing to leave it up to staff and. The applicant to work out whatever is best on that, if it's better to have a wrought iron and. And maybe just even check with law enforcement if they need that, or if the cameras, if the if the applicant feels that the cameras are sufficient. And keep that consistent block wall across the whole thing. Um, I I'm fine with whatever staff recommends on that, it's just I wanna make sure that that area is not. Left and neglected and um just becomes a a nothing area there, so, thank you, um, I think. My only other concern, and I did talk to um our our city manager as well as the applicant, is. Uh, I think those flex units are great, I think they can be well utilized in our community, we have a community that has a lot of home-based businesses. But my only concern with those is the potential parking. Um, if you have fifteen units, we don't have a lot of designated parking there. As I talked to the applicant, the applicant did s- say that these aisle ways are wide. Uh, approximately thirty feet, give or take, and that they will be able to. You can still park a car along the side as well as still get a moving truck through. Um, so as long as that's okay, to to be able to do that, I'm I'm fine and in full support of that. Once again, thank you for for all your legwork, for doing this, for bringing back a better project. And I'm excited, I think this will be a great project and great asset to our community, so thank you.
Ma- Mayor, I I if I can just correct myself from um, oh, I referred to uh. Jocelyn Yao as councilmember and it's Mayor Protem, and I just wanted to correct myself, I I I didn't want her to. Think that I I was putting her back in as a councilmember in her rightful spot as Mayor Protem. A- and thank you, Kayden, for giving me a cheers at the end, I appreciate it.
Don't know if that was a cheers, I think he was upset that you called his mom councilmember, but we'll let that fly, we'll let that fly. No, thank you for that. Councilmember Lorimer, and we'll keep the public hearing open, just in case there's any. Um, rhetoric as to Councilmember Lorimer, if he had any suggestions, so.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, um, yeah, uh, it it looks looks like a great project, I wanna thank the applicant. Um, for their outreach to the community, uh, to the surrounding community in particular, it's extremely important and. Um, for development projects, they come into the city and appreciate the the hard work that you put in. Um, but when I heard about the the flex units coming in, uh, got very excited about that. I think that's gonna be a great addition um for our residents and um diversifying. You know, the options that are available, and it it looks like a fantastic project, and I'm looking forward to. Um, seeing this in our community, and I appreciate your willingness to invest in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, and likewise, I I'll echo them the same comments, very excited about the the flex. Um, design that you that you've created for this, I think that's exactly what our community needs, I mean, love to have more small office space, but I think that's another good aspect to. What we do have a lot of contractors, small contractors in our in our city, so um I think that'll be very well utilized and appreciate that. Um, I think kinda to echo Councilmember Rigby's comments, I think this is the right location for this project, it was just only a little, you know. Little bit more to the east, but I I think it's a great uh, it's a great project and and I'm I'm definitely excited that we're gonna be voting on this. And get you squared off so you can get doing business, you know, so. Um, we will officially close the public hearing, and I will ask our council for a motion of second based on what the, what our staff has put together. On the recommended actions.
Quick, quick question, Mr. Mayor, for our city attorney, Erica, there's five recommended um actions, do we need to do them individually? Or can we do, can we move all five at the same?
Alright, so one through four, basically, and then they're, we have the right one through four, and then the last one will be the ordinance reading.
I would move for approval on staff's recommendations of one through four on this item.
Second.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Rigby?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Yao?
Yeah.
Mayor Plott?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
I would also like to move uh the last recommendation for the. Ordinance to change the project site's existing zoning from heavy agriculture agricultural. Agriculture to commercial, general commercial zoning, sorry, I butchered that, you know what I mean, Lorimer?
Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, go ahead and read the ordinance title. Uh, an uncodified ordinance of the City Council of the City of Eastville, California, amending the official zoning map. From A two heavy agricultural to C one slash CP, general commercial at. One four five fifty-five, one four five seventy-seven, and one four five eight seven Chandler Street. APNS one four four one two zero 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 two dash zero zero three and dash zero zero four. Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Rigby?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Yao?
Yeah.
Mayor Plott?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Alright, congratulations. Absolutely. Alright, we'll now move to item thirteen point one, the League of California Cities Twenty Twenty Annual Conference, uh, delegate and alternates. And this will be presented by Mark Donahue.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The Twenty Twenty League of California Cities Annual Conference is scheduled for Wednesday, October seventh through October ninth, and it will be held virtually this year. Um, as part of that meeting, um, resolutions need to be voted on that uh to establish league policy. In order to vote at the business meeting, the city council must designate a voting delegate and appoint up to two alternates as well. So the recognition would be to appoint a delegate or and one or two alternates for the upcoming League of California Cities Conference.
Alright, has there been any uh, anybody else wanna make public comment?
No, Mayor.
Alright, then I will move to council for discussion, uh, Councilmember Lorimer.
Well, I do plan on participating, uh, I have to for the state board meeting.
Okay, Councilmember Rigby?
Mr. Mayor, if there's no further uh discussion on this item, I'd like to move for uh Councilmember Lorimer to be the delegate. And then I would volunteer myself and uh I I'd like to nominate. Mayor Protem Yao as the second alternate for that.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Rigby?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Yao?
Yep.
Mayor Plott?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Alright, we'll now move to item thirteen point two, COVID nineteen update and sales tax update and the Eastville Emergency Enterprise Grant Program update. Which will be presented by our city manager, Mr. Brian Jones.
So we packed a lot into this agenda item, uh, but as councils asked, we've, we're bringing back COVID update. Nineteen updates every council meeting. And we will be also doing a highlight of the sales tax update. Uh, but we will have a more in-depth one on September twenty-third, the next council meeting, and we also have an uh update on the Emergency Enterprise Grant Program. So Amanda Wells, our finance director, will be sharing some of this. So current COVID nineteen numbers as of Tuesday, September eighth. Um, you can see um the confirmed cases, um, I think right now, um. The county is now doing confirmed cases and confirmed recoveries, something that our council's been asking for for a while. And you can see right now, it lo- appears that we have about a hundred cases uh in our city that are active. Uh, we have nearly nine hundred and ninety-seven case, we've had uh uh nine ti- or ten times that amount. Uh. And um confirmed deaths in Eastville seventeen, and from what I understand, uh, one of those seventeen is a uh is a softball. Team captain uh that I just read on Facebook, so um. Governors issues, new guidelines, um, so we have a new color scheme. Um, some people have referred to it the Candy Land colors, cuz the numbers, the colors are the same as those on the Candy Land. Game that we used to play as kids, um, but um. But effective August thirty-first, a color-coded tiered system was released. Uh, uh, um, uh, um, and and hair salons and barber shops could open on August thirty-first. So, um. Go back, um, so uh we did a free city hall mask giveaway on September first and. Which we created a drive-through right in front of City Hall and. And and to create social distancing, we have people roll down their windows and instead of their cheeseburger, they got a bag full of masks. So we're pretty excited about that. Yeah, I think the county donated those masks to us, uh, um, so thank you, thank you, Riverside County. Uh, Eastville Business Support, um, we've been, we're, I think we are the only city that is doing free um. Uh, business support outdoor dining permits, um, because we don't believe that our businesses should be charged. For what the government is forcing them to do, and so um we want to help them be as successful as possible, so. Um, the council authorized us to to do these free of charge, and we're doing them within twenty-four to forty-eight hours, so. Uh, if you go around the Eastville Gateway, you'll see five, six, seven businesses that have outdoor dining right now. And they've all been permitted by the the staff in twenty-four to forty-eight hours, so the fastest turnaround in the state of California for. Outdoor dining permits at at no cost. Uh, congratulations, community development team and our businesses. Um, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty general fund, um, I will pass this off to Amanda, cuz this is not my slide. It's all dollar sign, and there's nu- there's numbers on there.
Good evening, Amanda Wells, uh, Finance Director. So these numbers that we have here before us are for the period ending June thirtieth of twenty twenty, so this is last fiscal year. Um, the figures are based on approximately ninety-five percent of the year being reported. Um, and the first quarterly interim report will be coming um on September twenty-third, that will have kind of a little bit better final figures. Still won't be our complete final figures because uh audited financials will probably not be complete until the end of October. So what we have here is three columns, we have mid-year budget, um, which is the adjusted budget that came before council in February. Then we have the April projections, when we presented the COVID impacts to council in April. And then our actuals that we have on the books as of right now, and as you can see, we went from a three hundred and twelve thousand dollar. Potential budget surplus at mid-year to a deficit of one point seven million in April. And now we are actually reporting a three point nine million dollar budget surplus, and so this is a. Combination of what Brian and I have kind of been talking about is a unique situation that we have here in Eastville, so we. We smashed our HDL projections for COVID on sales tax. In addition, um, all of the departments did a very good job of cutting expenditures. And so you see that our revenues are higher and our expenditures are much lower than even the April projections came through with. So specifically looking at just a couple of our revenue categories, these are the revenue categories that had the biggest fluctuations. Sales tax at mid-year, we were projecting nine point seven million dollars in April, we thought we were gonna go down to eight point one, this is based on. HDL projections, actuals right now are looking at about ten point three million, so we came in. At six hundred and thirteen thousand above the COVID nineteen impact um projections. So some of this is HDL conducted some audits and brought in over six hundred thousand additional revenue um based on county audits. So that's locating monies that were misappropriated with the county pools. And then looking down at licenses and fees and permits. Um, both building and planning had budget deficits, mostly due to, I think. They brought in a lot of pools and solars, but I think those are fixed fee permits, and I think development and planning. Wa- was down a little bit during the closures, and then our vehicle license fee. We have about a seven hundred and forty-four thousand budget surplus there, I think that may have been a little bit of a budget error when. Revenue was done um in the prior year that it wasn't caught at mid-year. And then looking at expenditures, these are the main categories that saw the large changes, we went from three point eight million. In personnel at mid-year, we were projected at about three point one in April, actuals are coming in at three point two. This is mostly due to our um. Budgeting at top step, which is how we did the last fiscal year, and then also the reduction in staff is why you're seeing the savings. Contract services, I know this is something that council has been interested to see, um, at mid-year, we had three thirteen point four million dollars budgeted for contract services. And this does also include the PD contract, in addition to um planning, building. And public works, it hits the general fund. April projections, we were projecting down to thirteen million, and that was by bringing in the planning manager in-house and some other positions. Actuals right now are at twelve million, so we saved another million dollars in contracts. And then operations, uh, this is really where you can kinda see that the departments took. And then operations, uh this is really where you can kind of see that the departments took. The COVID impacts pretty seriously and cut back on expenditures for operations. So at mid-year, we were at four point two, April, we projected we would cut about two hundred thousand, we actually cut. Um, another five hundred thousand or so for actuals. So that is the the quick little um presentation on kind of where we're at, I'll be coming back the next council meeting with a more detailed. Report on how we did for the period ending six thirty. I think, is that it? Oh, the grant, forgot about the grant. So the business grant, so we uh council approved the program, we opened the um application process on August twenty-seventh. So far today, I think as of four P M or so, we had twenty-six applications. The applications will be reviewed on September six- sixteenth with the ad hoc committee, which I think is the COVID ac- ad- ad hoc committee. And then award notification to the vendors will be by September eighteenth. Um, I think we may have some money still available, so it's possible for us to open up a phase two. Um, especially if some of the applications are not complete, we can spend another two weeks kind of doing a phase two of the um grants. So as far as outreach, that was a concern that was brought up by council, um it was shared on social media. Uh, the Community Development Department sent out two emails to all active businesses. Over six hundred um businesses, right? And then phone calls, um, I think we had one person, I think it was Crystal called over a hundred and fifty businesses. And then Community Development and Crystal split, um, doing door-to-door visits to several of our businesses in the shopping centers. So that is the presentation, we are available for any questions.
Thank you, Amanda, that's very, very informative, it was very, it's a lot of good news there. It was awesome, I'm sure there's smiles all over the place here, I'm sure remotely there's smiles as well, so. Um, I will start uh with uh Councilmember Lorimer.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, um, I wanna thank. The staff for the presentation, great presentation, good news, and yes, smiles, um. The, and I also wanna thank our residents for, you know, shopping local, dining local. And um really, that that's what these these numbers reflect, um. During this COVID time and uh you're you exceeded expectations, so. Thank you to the community and um. For the uh the grants, I I wanna thank staff for the the hard work in going out and. Communicating with our local businesses to make them aware of these dollars that were available. And uh I I was able to actually see firsthand, um. What one of those visits and uh in fact, the 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 staff member didn't realize I was there until after the fact. It was very professional and um very well done, and yeah, I could hear it in the uh. The owner's voice of how appreciative they were and um, so it really kudos all around and uh. No, no real questions, thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilmember, uh we'll go with Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, um, I I don't wanna. Reiterate too much of what Councilmember Lorimer said, but I think it's it's worthwhile doing, thank you to staff, thank you for. When things started to go sideways and we recognized that right away and we made adjustments. And staff did a great job with making those adjustments and continuing to watch things, so great job to staff. Great job to uh watching the numbers and and helping us out with the numbers. Like Councilmember Lorimer said, also great job to our residents, I mean, this is one of those things that. Uh these numbers really show that, like Councilmember Lorimer said, that that we uh our residents have been shopping local. And helping our city out. One of those things too is is there's. My thought is, sometimes when when people do certain things, you need to reward them. And I think our residents have buckled down and they've shopped local and they've helped to keep some of that money here. Within our city and we need to reinvest in that, one of the concerns that has been a concern for everyone, especially over the the most recent times. Has been our safety and our law enforcement, and our law enforcement has done a great job. Um, and I think when we went through our budget and we we saw this coming. We didn't cut our our law enforcement, we increased our law enforcement by over, I think it was about three hundred thousand dollars, we increased our law enforcement, it was four hundred thousand dollars. And increased our overall personnel of our law enforcement. That was not the maximum that we wanted to do, we wanted to do more, but we realized that we were going into a tough time with our budget. And we needed to be cautious of what we did, but with that being said, our residents have done a great job with shopping local. We have seen our revenues a little bit higher than we originally anticipated. Which has given us a little bit extra money. I would like to see us if we can at least have something brought back to us presentation-wise of reinvesting that money into more of our law enforcement. If it's um maybe providing us options of what else we can do of of bringing on another set uh team. Um, possibly increasing our hours, um just different options that we can do to to reinvest in our safety of our of our community. Is that is high priority for our council, high priority for our community. Uh, like I said, our law enforcement has done a great job, I wanna continue to invest in our law enforcement, to continue to have a safe community, in fact. Just a little side note, I don't wanna get too off track, but I was talking to someone today, just in in the business that I am in real estate, that. They were thinking of moving out of town, um, uh to a a different area, and they actually pulled off their thought of moving. Because they love Eastville and they love how safe it is. I wanna keep Eastville that way, I wanna keep people. Doesn't help me business-wise, but I wanna keep people from not moving out of Eastville, I want them to to continue to realize that we live in a safe community. So I wanna see what we can do to bring back options uh that we can consider as a council to uh increase our our law enforcement. Um, get it a little bit closer to where we would actually like it to be. And I think once again, with that being said, we also, um just as we did at our budget time. We'd like to see recommendations from from our our police chief and what he would see appropriate, what he would recommend as to. Um, where the money would best be in invested in our law enforcement, um. They're doing a great job and I wanna continue to to provide them with the tools and what they need to 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 continue that. I think that's all I have on this, um, again, I appreciate all that staff's done, the updates that you've given us on this, this has been a a tough thing. It's been something that our target of um throughout COVID i- has been moving constantly from the state. We continue to see that and and staff's doing a good job with adapting and and keeping our city running i- as best as we can, so great job to staff.
Alright, thank you, Councilmember Rigby, uh Mayor Pro Tim.
I'm sorry, I had one more thing too, just o- on that too, one of the things that was a worry for a lot of people was. We saw a big influx in our hiring, uh we did a, we did a layoff and then we brought on new staff. Uh, but this just goes to show that how we have invested that money properly now and how we have saved over a million dollars. Just in our our operations and our staffing, um by changing our model a little bit and bringing more people in-house. Not only does that save us money, but I feel that it gets more of a buy-in because they're an actual city employee. They have that that pride of, I work for the city of Eastville, I'm a city employee, so. Um, once again, great job to staff in in helping to bring those employees on, not only bring them on, but to bring them on quickly. So we can start to see those savings right away, so, thank you.
I think it's just missing a four million dollar swing, and I think four, it's more than that, it's like. I can't do my math, but like five point six million, right? Yeah, that's that's pretty awesome, so, m- Mayor Pro Tim Yao.
Yes, I'll I'll keep this short cuz someone's getting very impatient, um but. Yes, I agree with what my colleagues have mentioned, definitely good job, kudos to our staff and certainly our residents as well. And I I do wanna say like this is, this is truly unprecedented during this time where, you know, cities are struggling. Um, yet we are together, we were able to, and we're still thriving, so. Um, thank you to our city staff and our residents for for all of that.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim.
Yeah, that that four million swing is just the buying power of our community when our community buys local. Uh a- and I couldn't be more impressed with how people are spending their money locally in the city of Eastville. A- and it uh it shattered all the financial forecast trends from all the experts. Uh um because when our Eastville residents stay local and buy local, w- we have a very. Uh a significant uh ability to uh grow our revenue streams and serve our community better, so. Um, thank you to our residents, um that you guys couldn't have said it better.
Yeah, it's a, yeah, like. I'm trying to bring this, yeah, it's five point six million dollar swing, cuz you had the four million plus, we were projecting one point seven, one point eight million. It's incredible, and I and I, you know, just to kind of put it in perspective, I had our, we have a the League Mayor's meeting we had this morning, eleven, we do it once a month. And this is kind of something that we started doing since COVID, we kind of give these updates and stuff and uh. Pretty much every mayor's represented and everyone kind of gives a local report of what's going on in their city, and this is, this is a topic that is, that is coming up, is is how it's impacting their cells. And so, you know, we're, there are many cities that aren't not, they're they're not as fortunate as we are, and and. That might be due to tourism for some in the desert area, uh it may be due to hotels and 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 car sales and. Things like that, where it's just greatly impacted, we don't necessarily have that same dynamic that we're dependent on those things. But even in some cities, just they're very similar to Eastville, where it's just cells generated and they just don't have the makeup or that support. And uh it's definitely the power of our residents and and that that shopping local, being local and just. Uh getting out there and and supporting, whether it be via, you know, uh an app. Or being out in those restaurants, trying to find creative ways to make sure our ra- restaurants stay open. Uh but it it is awesome, and and I agree with Councilmember Rigby, I think there's a, there's a way. We should reward our residents and and that could be a vehicle of public safety. I think we need to revisit that, I think we need to revisit the opportunity of looking at two set, you know, to having a set team. In there to, again, continue to attack kind of the the special assignments uh uh of the grill houses, or maybe it's additional patrol hours, but. That's something I think we need to look at and revisit it cuz it's it it's there, uh and I understand it's somewhat of a one-time increase, but I think. This is also the worst we've seen, this is months of the worst of COVID, it it got better. As far as regulations, cuz that was when everything was closed down, period, now there might have been more of incentive for people to really support, and maybe that. We might have lost its luster in that in that full support as as you would, you know, kind of living in that normal circumstance. But again, that was when the regulations were the toughest at this point, right, so I think it's something we need to really look at and and be smart about it, but but something we can. And then we can curb it, and I love to get, uh, you know, uh um Lieutenant Boyd, I love to get your kind of expertise on this, when we do have that presentation. And revisit this, I think that's something that that uh it's worth mentioning, Amanda, thank you again for putting this together and bearing such great news. Um, it's it's awesome and and it's it's nice to see, uh, um, to to get this kind of this information, so we appreciate it. Again, I, I don't think we need to vote on, I think it's a receivable file, but says, i- it's, there was a recommend, is a recommendation, do we need to? Vote on the receivable file cuz it's kind of a weird request here, so staff recommends the city receivable file, the COVID nineteen, does that? Is that insinuating that we need to actually vote on something? Yeah, I didn't think so, okay, okay, but I would like to take Councilmember Rigby's request and to bring that to an agenda item. The as soon as we possibly can, to look at that. Okay, do I have a consensus on that too, from Mayor Pro Tim Yao and and Councilmember Lorimer?
This is Clint, um, I I would like to see the the numbers, um, I I. I do have some reservations uh a- about. Facing an increase in law enforcement off of this one update, so I I would really like to see. Uh, a a detailed analysis of of what this would mean, uh, yes, I absolutely would love to have. More law enforcement in this city, but I I also, I never. I don't wanna be in the position of having to pull it back in the future because we can't afford it. And so I I I would really like to see an analysis of. If if there are areas that we can improve upon in terms of call times or that we need more deputies. As part of the the set team operations, if there's a feeling that that would make a difference, but. Uh, a a detailed analysis i- if this were to come back. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's absolutely fair, I mean, to have some type of analysis to come back to to have us. Then for then bringing back for a decision if we can make sense of that, and then we'll also have a finalized, we'll have a finalized budget as well, correct, uh Amanda?
So the the next council meeting, I'm gonna bring back a finalized quarterly report, it's for the period ending six thirty. Um, but I won't have any updated numbers for the current quarter that we're in, that will probably be closer to November.
Perfect. Alright, uh Mayor Pro Tim Yao.
Yes, um, I'll, I I do want this to be um brought back and we can currently look into this.
Okay, alright, perfect, thank you. Alright, we'll now move to.
It it'll probably take a couple meetings to have R S O do a lot of the analysis that Clint was asking for. Uh of the calls and call for service and how those are doing, a- and then bringing back some numbers, so it won't be at the next meeting, but it it. We can probably do something in October, um. Uh and work with R S O to put flush out some numbers of what that would look like, I wo- I would caution us. We're we're, while we have a surplus, uh um, you know, we do have some major. Economic milestones that are coming up in November, uh that could change things, a- a- and, um, so. Um, we'll bring the numbers back, but uh um and then it's gonna take a little while to process if the council wants to make any changes through the county. Uh and taking a staff report to the county, um to have those e- e- either. Positions or hours or whatnot added, um, and so, you know, we we can evaluate whether it makes sense to do it. Right away, or or wait until after elections and see how the elections fare with the economy. Or wait till mid-year and see how we did all summer long, uh i- in Eastville to see. You know, i- is this just a one-time, everybody stayed local and bought local, and we got a a a big surplus or. Is this a a continual in our sales tax revenue because economic development is such a strategic priority focus for our council and staff? That it's starting to really pay off for us, right, uh um and businesses are opening up, so. We gotta kind of understand what's going on, uh um, this is a an anomaly that most cities aren't experiencing right now, so we need to kind of flesh out. Why is it, and and it could be just because we don't have car sales that we depend on and hotels that we depend on. Uh a- and both of those were greatly impacted in a lot of other agencies, um, um, and then most of our businesses that. Remain were considered essential businesses, or our larger businesses were considered uh essential businesses. A- and and their sales tax revenues went through the roof because they were being patronized quite a bit for toilet paper and whatnot during COVID, so. We're we're not, we're we're trying to get the sense of how this is all playing out, and I just wanna make sure this is a consistent pattern and not. A quarter, uh one quarter, a spike uh um going on, so I I I wanna uh be cautious with it, but.
I I I think what's important, I just wanna start having that discussion already back on the table, a- and as we start trickling, we can kind of see what our Q one looks like. While we're having this discussion, cuz Q one will eventually come out, and that will be another analysis of what we're looking at, I think it will be, might not be like that. But I think it'll be very positive for what we're anticipating, and I think right there, we can kind of start pointing at a trend of what we're going at. And that doesn't also consider the hotel and all these other things that are coming forward uh in our city, so, uh Councilmember Rigby.
Yeah, and I think Councilmember Lorimer, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's more of the analysis that you're looking at to make sure that. This is uh not just an anomaly of the increase in revenues, correct?
A- ab- absolutely, um, that cuz I I I don't wanna make a. And and thank you for the opportunity to clarify, I I just, I wanna make sure that the the numbers are there. And that it is sustainable, um, and there there are other options too with. Uh these dollars, public safety is a top priority for the city, but maybe doing an investment instead of additional. Um, hours to put it towards a a. A substation that we've been talking about, uh the these one-time sort of. Things, uh and one-one-time sort of funds that we put it towards that thing that we've been working towards for a long time. Um, so I'd like to see all the different options presented to us and a detailed analysis of. I- if there are areas that we can improve upon, um, on the law enforcement side, thanks.
And I totally agree with that, I think just to see the financial analysis on making sure that this is sustainable. Um, and then also just the recommendation on Lieutenant Boyd on on what he feels is important, cuz he may come back and say, you know what? It would be good to invest some. It would be good to invest some into a substation versus into personnel right now or whatever his his recommendation comes to. But I also think one of my reasons in bringing this up now is kind of exactly what you said, Brian, knowing. The process that it takes, the this, I. I don't know if there's an appropriate word, the speed or the sometimes lack of speed sometimes that it takes to get it processed. So I think it's important that we do start that discussion sooner rather than later. Because if we do want to move forward, it's gonna, it's not gonna be something that we approve it in October and. You know, by November, December that we're gonna have the personnel, it it could take months for us to get that personnel. So. I think it's worthwhile to have the discussion, to to get that discussion going and just to see what what we can do.
All right. Thank you everyone for everyone for the discussion. Appreciate it. All right, we'll now move to item thirteen point three. Update on automatic ALPR cameras, which is the automated, our automatic license plate reader cameras and speed radar sign data, and that will be presented by Lieutenant Boyd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Again, uh at the request of Councilmember Rigby at the last uh council session. There was a s- some questions that came up about what ALPR, the automatic license plate readers are and. Hopefully we can answer some of the questions that maybe the public has been uh bringing up on social media. So with that. What's the ALPR do? Basically, it enhances law enforcement efficiency and effectiveness through technology, enhances public safety, deters criminal activity. And alerts law enforcement to vehicles or people of interest and provides investigative leaves after a crime has been committed. Sorry, I'm looking at two different things, so I can't read the screen too well. And next thing is uh how's the ALPR data used? It's used for criminal investigations, locating stolen stolen vehicles. Identifying vehicles used in crimes and sharing of data between law enforcement agencies. So those are those law enforcement agencies that subscribe to the vigilant system. We can share that data back and forth with each other. Um as an interest of maintaining the integrity of. The thing, you can't really share that information directly, but if there's a request made, we can call another agency, San Diego. Or San Bernardino, Chino, anything like that. We can call them and say, hey, do you have any hits for this? Can you put this plate in the system? We're looking for this vehicle and vice versa. But we have to maintain the integrity, so we don't just automatically open that up to everybody. How ALPR data is not used, this is a big one. So what we don't do is we don't take photographs of drivers and passengers. And I'm trying to be ambiguous because this is an investigative tool, so I'm I'm just, it's a general overview of stuff. So hopefully you can understand that. Um it's not a red light camera, so we're not using it for traffic enforcement. It doesn't capture speed data. We're not gonna mail you a ticket if you go through a red light. Um it's not used by law enforcement for spying on you. We're not looking to see who's doing this and who's doing that. And we don't collect the data to get your driving and your shopping habits so that we can send you coupons in the mail. It's not designed for that at all. Some people have asked that. As an example, this is one of your ALPR cameras. This is what they look like. I'm not gonna show you where the location is exactly, but uh. So if you're driving along and you see these type of uh cameras up there, that's what they um the intent of the thing is. It's basically uh. I'm not gonna say that it won't capture pictures of the occupants in the vehicle. It's not its intent, but sometimes it does. Um but it's designed to actually capture the license plate data and that's what it reads. This is an overview of where your uh cameras are located. Right now you have nine of them in the city. I made the dots pretty big, but uh. Anybody driving around is uh can see those up there. They're strategically located so we can catch people coming into and out of the uh um. Out of the city or out of the uh major shopping centers. Shouldn't say catch, it's just capturing data. Some of the stats since you guys installed them um since two thousand nineteen, you've had uh four million or forty-three million eight hundred and twelve. Five hundred and seventy-nine thousand plates read. Um you have nine locations, which equates to about fifty cameras, I think it is, and you have six mobile ones. Those are attached to the uh. The police units that are driving around. Okay, so those ones are actually driving around. The the data that those capture aren't as much because obviously they're moving around and it's not just getting a steady stream of information. Uh but those have captured four hundred and seventy-two thousand five hundred and ninety-four plates. The hits via the fixed locations to date are eighteen thousand five hundred and four, and by hits, I mean maybe a stolen plate, maybe a vehicle of interest. A missing person, um any vehicle or or person that we're looking for that's maybe associated with that vehicle. That's how many hits you've had since uh two thousand nineteen. I believe covid maybe affected some of those numbers because we don't have as many people driving around, but that's a lot of data that it's being collected. Um we've had three hundred and seventy-four hits via the mobile um units. The ALPR system, it's basically assisted us investigating robberies, burglaries, homicides, domestic violence and stolen vehicles. Not gonna go into detail as to how those assisted us, but I will say they were instrumental in uh solving some of those crimes. Again, it's a it's a tool that our investigators and our and our deputies use out on the street to uh um to help further their investigation. Um the ALPR data, so some people are worried about what we do with that information and who has access to that. The ALPR data is restricted. Um it's only for law enforcement. It doesn't uh, it's not linked necessarily to the DMV. It's just capturing the plate. Okay, so that's all it's doing. So we can access that to see if a plate had moved through a certain time or if it's been in the area at a certain time. Um the data is only used for uh law enforcement official business and then the sheriff's department has a policy that addresses that much like the CLTS. Uh information, you have to be a uh, you have to be trained to use the system and you have to be logged into it to use it. So it it does track. The information that uh you're pulling from the system. So moving on with the uh the speed signs um or the radar trailers that we have, the city currently has twenty-seven radar signs and two radar trailers. Uh those signs are designed to be moved um and the trailers are mobile and we use that data just to. Do traffic studies and things like that. If they were permanent, um it's not, it's not in the best case. The city bought the ones that are mobile. What do the speed signs and trailers do? They provide real-time feedback to drivers and encourage behavioral change. So if you're speeding down the street. And you look up there and you see that sign flash, it's twenty-five miles an hour and you see the sign flashing that you're doing twenty-eight miles an hour or thirty miles an hour. It's gonna prompt you to hopefully slow down. That's the idea behind them. If you go too fast, it's gonna flash at you and let you know, hey, it's just to get your attention to slow you down. They also provide traffic data for the city traffic engineers to evaluate uh speed and roadway conditions. And they insist in identifying problem areas that require a different traffic enforcement. How they're not used, again, this is like the ALPRs, doesn't take a photograph of the drivers or passengers. It's not a led, a red light camera again. We're not gonna mail you a ticket. And the vehicle information in this instance is not captured. All it's doing is sending a signal to your vehicle to capture your speed. And then it gives you real-time feedback of what that speed is. Then that data is not retained. As an example, what those uh speed signs look like, that in fact on the left is one of your cameras. I took that picture. Wasn't I good enough, I was not a good enough photographer to actually capture the uh with the speed on there as people were coming past me, but what I wanted to point out was if you see these. Um the left side there, the little box down there on the left, that is where um the actual radar is. That's what's capturing the uh the speed. The device on the right is an LED light that will flash at you. The radar trailer is not one of yours right now, but that's an example of what they look like. Um I know that the, one of the things that the speed or the uh speed signs do do. Is that they don't give you your your fastest speed. So they're programmed by the city engineers to cap out at a certain mile per hour. So in other words, what we don't want to do is encourage people, hey, how fast can I get this thing to to go up there, right? Um so say if it's a twenty-five mile an hour street, if you're doing thirty-two miles an hour, what it'll do is it'll start flashing at you and it'll it'll. Display the sign, slow down. So again, we just don't want people getting up to a hundred and fifty to see how high they can ring that thing up to. Ask me how I know. This is a uh a very ambiguous, uh the, it didn't show up very well, but this is the current locations of this map. Again, it's changing. Um the city can move those around as needed um or at our request. And that concludes my presentation. I'm open for questions. Again, it's hopefully I can answer some of them if you have any. Um. Again, I have to be ambiguous with some of it because it's an investigative tool.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Appreciate it. Also very informative. Even being restricted a little bit on how much you could share was still very informative. Mark, was there any uh any public comment on this?
No, Mayor.
Okay, then we will turn to uh Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Lieutenant Boyd. I I really appreciate this. I appreciate this presentation. Very, very informative. There's been discussion on social media about a lot of that and I would really encourage people that have. Questions regarding the ALPRs or regarding the speed signs to revisit this, to listen to this. Over and over again because Lieutenant Boyd clarified a lot of information that has been coming up on social media. I just wanted to to touch upon just a couple of of items that you did share. That uh has been a lot of um misunderstanding. Um one that, before getting into misunderstanding. We made the decision as a council to once again invest into our law enforcement, to give them additional tools. And the part that I liked, I really like about this with the ALPRs is. The ALPR system has successfully assisted in investigating robberies, burglaries, domestic violence, homicides, stolen vehicles. This is a tool that in the last year and a half that has helped to um without getting into details, that has helped to solve. Crimes not only in our city, outside of our city, neighboring jurisdictions. Um it it's one of those tools that just continues to help make our city safe. So. Thank you for that. On the ALPRs. There's been a lot of misunderstanding regarding. Uh are those red light cameras, all that? So I really appreciate you clarifying that for our residents, helping them realize not to say. Go out and run red lights so they aren't taking pictures of you, but that's why we have our traffic officers. We have uh our our patrol deputies. And we have everyone out there that's gonna get you for those, but uh it helps to clarify that. Also on this, the speed radar signs. Um I think these are very. Very crucial and have been very good in our community as well as have had a lot of questions of, did that take a picture of me? Did that? Am I gonna get a ticket? Um i- i- is it gonna be mailed to me, wha- whatever the case may be? Unfortunately, these are not photo enforcement. These are just uh basically information. But it is information that is Lieutenant Boyd shared that our city traffic engineer uses them. As well as it helps to identify problem areas that can require additional traffic enforcement from our our sheriff's department. Um the thing to remember too that Lieutenant Boyd briefly touched upon with these is. We've seen on social media that some people get them in their neighborhood and they're like, oh, great, I have a a speed radar in my neighborhood. It's gonna stop everything. And then a few weeks later, it's gone and then they start complaining. But this is something to realize that these are not permanent. Fixed locations that these are at. These are subject to be moved. They can be there a week. They can be there two weeks. They can be there a couple of months. Um some of them may be there longer than others. So if you have specific areas that uh of concern for speed. Um contact the city and the city can evaluate whether or not they can put a a speed radar in that area. And it will help to uh provide information and it does help to deter too because it helps with. As as you see that flash at you, it's just a a mental thing that you slow down or hopefully that you slow down. So. Thank you for this presentation. It is very helpful. Once again, anyone that has any questions about this, I really strongly recommend that you. Uh listen to Lieutenant Boyd's presentation again and uh it should answer, I would think. Most of your questions regarding these. So thank you, Lieutenant Boyd.
If I could just add uh Councilmember Rigby, and the public's welcome to contact me if they have specific questions about it too. I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you.
Councilman Lormore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um I want to thank the lieutenant for his presentation, very informative and um. I I must admit those those the strobing when it when it happens uh is very bright, but uh I I'm. I'm I know it must be slowing some people down out there, so that's a, it's a good thing. Thank you.
Councilmember Lormore, how do you know that those are bright?
You know, as soon as I said it, I was like, oh, that's uh, thank you for the question. I I've been taking a lot of uh.
He's been, he's been walking a lot and he saw some cars.
Yes, exactly. A- actually, that that that's exactly what happens and so. Walking late at night and the car is driving down the road and I'm getting blinded by these lights while walking on the street, but uh. It does seem to slow the cars down too, so it's working.
The deputy here just asked Lieutenant Boyd where you live.
Come on down, come on down.
Lieutenant Boyd, thank you again. And you know what? I'll I'll say this and uh there's actually, this has come up in two different cities. Where I've known people and they said, hey, we just want to thank you and your city for doing that. It's actually, the thing we don't realize, it's it's solved crimes in other cities. What our cameras have done. So I'll give, I'll just say the city of Laverne and and in Eastville, or sorry, Chino. So I know that those are two cities that I've reached out and and personally thanks to, hey, thank you for you guys for doing that because it's actually helped solve some things. So. I don't know the details of them, just other than I think. So it was as vague as is kind of the things that you're not allowed to speak about. So. Thank you again for that presentation and and I'm glad that we have something that's is as valuable as it is in our city. Um with that, we will go to our city manager report.
So I first want to start out by giving the floor to our planning manager, Jason Kilabru. He has something he'd like to share with council.
Thank you, Ryan, for giving me uh your area of the agenda. Um and thank you, council and the mayor for this opportunity. Um I just wanted to quick, it takes a couple of seconds um to let uh this council know, this prestigious council know. That this will be my last city council meeting. Um I was presented an opportunity that. Put me in a position to make a really, really difficult decision uh to resign from my um position of planning manager with Eastville. Um I I hope with that resignation, it's not as some of these people in the front row. Have jokingly given me a boot out the door, but I I hope that. I I really, I really have enjoyed my time here. I I joke around with with, again, these people in the front row, but. You know, I've I've only been, you know, with the city for, you know, seven or so months. Um. But it's been like a covid seven or so months and it just, it it feels like longer and I really do feel, you know, very invested in the Eastville. Community and the Eastville team and I will miss uh this council um and, you know, the executive leadership. And the directors and Brian uh very much and uh I hope not to be a stranger. But I I really wanted to take the time to say thank you for the opportunity and and thank you for uh, you know, trusting the process and and going through. Um you know, staffing model changes that allowed me this opportunity. So thank you.
Thank you, Jase. I was thinking, you know, the the SB five thing, the independent contracting thing, can offer service for service. You know, but it's technically puts you on city payroll because that's kind of the new law now and you could still do that, possibly.
But we don't joke about cowpers like that.
Like I said, I'm just trying to work around, find ways where you can maybe make an employee but kind of independent contract, you know.
You you know, I I I want to take this moment and and mayor and council members, I I I want to highlight Jason. Um there's not too many people that can come into a city and in six or seven months make such a. Instrumental investment into our organization. Um and we're. S- still hoping tomorrow that he's gonna bring in a covid April Fool's note in September. Uh uh um uh and will accept it graciously. Uh um but he's got a great opportunity ahead of him and. You know, i- i- it's hard to say no um uh to to the offer that he has and and so. Uh I've never received a resignation letter so heartfelt as his. Um and that just shows the family that we've created here. And the team that we've created and the leadership that we have uh at at the executive management team and in the community development department and. And whatnot. So um he'll never get another opportunity to design a downtown from scratch like he will in Eastville. Uh um but if he wants to go to another city, he 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 can do that, but this is the great opportunity here. Uh um but uh. Uh uh um we're we're still making a sales pitch, but uh 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 um but uh. Um Jason, Jason has, you know, even though he is a Lakers fan and even though he is a Dodgers fan and a- a- and and all of those things. He he he, his sense of humor, his his ear-to-ear smile uh um and his positive attitude and and work ethic. Uh in in our organization has been phenomenal. Um and his mentorship, leadership and coaching, I've learned a lot from him. Um and uh I think the whole management team uh saw a bright future for him in Eastville, so. Uh he, but he saw a bright future in another organization and so we're hoping that the best and we'll always be here for him. So. Uh that that's part of the Eastville family. So and he's right about this covid seven months. It's uh. It it this seven months has felt like something more than seven months, but now I will get into the manager updates. Uh um on Tuesday, September first, the city of Eastville in partnership with. Uh, um, on Tuesday, September first, the city of Eastville in partnership with Riverside County hosted a successful free mass. Giveaway, the county generously donated twenty thousand masks to the city so that we could provide them to our residents. Residents remained in their cars. And did a drive by or drive through uh by city hall while staff handed out envelopes containing ma- a face mask. On Saturday, September nineteenth, the city of Eastville will host a shredding event at Aggie Ramirez from eight AM to noon. Residents can bring up to two boxes to shred face masks. Face masks will be required. Um, and you don't even need to get out of your car. Um, i- if you just put them in your trunk and open up your trunk, we'll probably remove them. Oh. Though, we won't remove them, but. Oh, they have to remove it themselves out of their car and then we'll put them in the shredder, but uh, um. Uh, um, but uh, the we're not doing the bulky pickup this year. Uh, um, i- i- in a conjunction with the shredding because of COVID. Uh, um, but um, we are looking forward to bringing that back uh when when regulations can allow such to happen. Uh, tomorrow, September tenth is the last day. Uh, for small businesses to submit for Eastville Emergency Enterprise Grant Program. Uh, applications are due by five thirty PM. So. Hopefully, there's a number of businesses out there working on their applications because we have still applications available. Uh, uh, to to distribute. Uh, don't forget to submit your census as the deadline is September thirtieth. And I also want to highlight um September eleventh, nine eleven uh is at six forty. Um, on Friday, uh, six forty of Friday and it it. You can come to Station Twenty Seven and we will have limited spots there. Uh, um, uh, but we will also be providing a virtual so that no one in the community has to miss the nine eleven ceremony. Um, this was a very uh memorable day um in our nation's history. Uh, where we as a nation came together, um, and we lost a a lot of people that day in our country. Um, and we lost a lot of firefighters and police officers and first responders. And so. Uh, it's a day we honor a a lot of people and and we heard in our opening prayer today. Um, uh, about um four individuals and there are hundreds of stories of. Heroes like those four individuals on that day. Um, it's a day where we had a bunch of people put. Uh, others before themselves and that's what our country is all about. So to on Friday, I think about six forty in the morning. Uh, if you go to our social media feed, you can uh you can get all the information to the virtual. Um, uh, and so we hope to see everybody there. I also want to remind everybody that October first is our state of the city. Uh, and it will be a a a virtual uh presentation, uh, amazing production. Um, we're looking forward to it. Um, and I think the community will look uh look forward to looking back on our first ten years. Uh, uh, as a city and it will be celebrating our tenth year of incorporation. So there's some special surprises that night. Um, that even I'm not even fully aware of. So, um, um, but uh, we're looking forward to everybody celebrating ten years. In our state of the city on October first. I believe it's at six PM. Um, so. And the pre-show starts at five thirty, so grab your popcorn and and tune in. Um, and with that, uh, I I want to thank everybody for this great, um, we we made it through a great summer. Uh, in Eastville and uh and for all those that are doing distance learning. Um, uh, we hope you're treating your teachers well on distant learning. Uh, um, and and going above and beyond the the call because you have a lot of opportunities to explore a lot of passions. Uh, of learning and s- uh, specialized learning for yourself. So, um, thank you. Um. And uh, we go on to the next item now.
Thank you, Brian. I want to clarify, I meant, I said SB five, Jason, I meant AB five, like independent co- I was, I got it wrong. I just want to say some real quick. I, the one thing I appreciate, you know, and there are a lot of things I appreciate about about you. But uh, you know, it's 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 a really big deal, the 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 ambiance that an individual creates and the attitude and the personality. And just the the, you know, they were all self being uh when you're around your colleagues and it's extremely important. The attitude, whether you have a really cruddy day or a great day, but the ambiance that you create, it's extremely important. And the one thing I always say is like. When I think of Jason, I think of a smile every single time. It's the first thing that comes to mind. All I see is this big smile, right? And and it's it's that's a great thing to have, right? It's a great thing to have. That means everyone around is affected by that positivity and it really, it really translates. What it translates to is everyone being, everyone works better when they're in a good environment. And if everyone has that attitude that you have and everyone has, it just makes everything better. So I just want to let you know just from a person kind of working. It's just a person that works in organizations, right? Is that I know the importance of that, of what an individual can bring. Whether they can make or break an organization and I appreciate you always elevating just simply of being you. No- nothing that, I'm not even talking about the your qualifications, which are another discussion, right? But just you being you, it it I really do appreciate that. And so hopefully, uh, you know, we wish you the best of luck and I know the doors will always be open. Right? If the option is there, the doors will be open. Hopefully, the grass is so greener. I mean that with all respect. And maybe you come back over here. So, but thank you again. All right. All right, we will now move to uh city council communications and we will start with Clint. Clint, same thing, if you want to take on the league, SCAG and RCTC.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, okay, we'll we'll kick off with. Uh, the league, as was discussed a little bit earlier, we're going to be having our, um. Our general assembly in October and I, so looking forward to participating in that and. Um, if they haven't already gotten out, they should be going out soon. The the invite the requests for participation. Um, so sign up for that. Um. For SCAG, uh, Southern California Association of Governments, um, we had our meeting. Well, our main regional council meeting last week and um it was a very big meeting. It was a culmination of two and a half years of uh staff working on it, but also the regional council providing input. Um, for SoCal Connect, previously known as the um. Regional Transportation Plan Sustainable Community Strategies or RTPSCS. Um, what that means is it it puts together a plan, uh, a forward looking plan, kind of like what we're. Going to be doing with Eastville twenty forty. Um, and it's federally mandated and also state mandated. But we come up with a plan that looks at transportation, housing, um. All of all goods movement and merges that all into one planning document that looks and projects into the future and. Make sure that all the different transportation organizations within the Southern California region. They're building freeway projects that match with a neighboring county instead of just focusing in on their own. Um, and so long and then the short of it, the the plan passed and it the. It represents six hundred and thirty, I think, two or thirty four billion dollars. Um, in infrastructure that is going to be put in um over this one timeline over the next twenty years. And um, it also represents over four thousand projects going to be coming to Southern California. And of course, with that, a a lot of jobs and um to to build that infrastructure, to build those projects. And um, then now that we we've done that, we we get to start the process all over again because in four years we. We we get to update that plan. Um, but it it was, it was great. The. A very, very diverse group of um communities came together, interest groups and I'm talking. Every every uh, the entire gamut. There was not one person that spoke against this plan. With the exception of people that wanted it to do even more, but they wanted the passage of it. And so we had business lining up with environmental groups, et cetera. And uh, I I've actually never seen anything like it. Um, so it it was a big day. And uh, SCAG staff is doing amazing work and um. Did some really heavy lifting to to get that through. And um, so that is now. Gone on, it's already gone to the feds and now it's been sent off to the state for final approval and um. Which we expect to happen. So that is SCAG and the the SCAG will also be having its uh general assembly. In um the coming months, so be sure to keep an eye out. Um, for RCTC, we had our meeting this morning, also had a meeting, um. In the last couple of weeks, uh, regarding toll lanes and but the the. The meeting today, there there were some uh closed session items, but um. What they talked about was really the high speed rail and I I know a lot of people have concerns with that, including myself. Uh, particularly after the presentation that they gave today. Um. And it it talked about how the Anaheim to LA uh stretch and. Um, how it's really bypassing um our area and that there is uh discussion about. Going over into Colton area, but um the negative aspects, uh, they they did not consult. Um, anybody in Riverside County on what they were gonna do. And um, as a result, uh, there are. A a a lot of negative issues associated with it and that we are having increased good movement, goods movement in into this area. Um, and in fact, it will push more of that into this area by what they have planned. Um, RCTC is in, um, trying to think about ways to address this. Um, I I some really serious strategizing needs to come into play. Um, but right now. Unfortunately, our 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 area is not going to get those investments of those tax dollars that all of us pay. But it will be bypassing our region. And um, I I I'd like to have happier news on that front. But it is still a work in progress. And um, but the overall just that the cost is, the cost continued to increase. And it's um, I don't know, high speed rail, train to nowhere, all that good stuff. It's it's real. Anyway, um, so I I did, i- if I could touch on, um. The the fact that Jason's gonna be leaving us, uh, I I'm very sorry to hear that. I really appreciate the the contributions. That you you've made to the city and um, in the time that you've been with us. I I had the opportunity to uh get a glimpse of the the letter that, um. Mr. Johns referenced uh of you not uh, uh, of you resigning. And I I just want to say that it's, it it was extremely, I can tell it was heartfelt and um, it. It's representative of an individual that is a class act. So, um. Thank you for y- your service to our residents, to our community. And I I I did hear in the uh public hearing, you did say we. Talking about Eastville twenty forty. So, um, I'm gonna take the, I'm gonna take your word on that because that was in public hearing that. Uh, you you're gonna be involved in that process. The, so, um. I I I'm kidding, but uh, I I really um appreciate the the contributions you've made. So. That concludes my public or my communications. Thank you.
Thank you, Clint. Hey, Clint, do you want to do vector control as well?
Uh, yeah, I I think that I.
I I forgot that.
Yeah, no, there there hasn't been a meeting. Um, there was a spring recently that they did and for some reason. Uh, this year, I I've been seeing an increase in mosquitoes and the next, uh. I guess it's later on this month that we'll be having, uh, I'll be having my first meeting with them and I look forward to addressing that with. With the staff there.
Perfect. All right, WR cog, there's no update. RT, we were dark in August. Uh, Todd, if you want to go on WCE and JCSD Parks Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, WCE, we met today and there were a couple of uh, uh, good discussions. One was regarding. The program launch update and one of the big points that comes up every time is regarding the opt out. Uh, right now, our opt out on the residential side is a little bit higher than we originally anticipated. But on the commercial side, it is substantially lower than what we anticipated. So it's one of those that. Um, as you look at customer wise, it's more on the residential side than we, like I said, than we anticipated. But you look at the overall load of where the energy is being used and we're way under because our commercial side uses a lot more. Energy than our residential side and that's a lot lower. The other thing that I think is interesting, it doesn't surprise me that on the commercial side that we are lower because on the commercial side. They really look at, and I mentioned this today in our meeting, that they really look at numbers. And when you tell them that we're gonna save you dollars, commercial side businesses look at that and they say, okay. How are you gonna save us money? And as WCE shares that, um, commercial side, they're staying with it because they want to save the money. Um, and they're they're seeing those savings already. There was one that they shared that the projected savings for one company. Uh, that is with, that is transitioned over from uh to WCE from SCE will be saving about a hundred thousand dollars annually. Just in their energy cost. So it's a large amounts. One of the other good discussions that we had was regarding our uh regarding bill collection and ba- bad debt. Um, which with COVID has uh been a little bit higher, may continue to be a little bit higher. Over the next little while, but it's something that WCE is keeping in mind and watching very carefully. Um, even with the high, higher than anticipated opt out rate. The bad debt that happens, bad debt always happens and it's it's always an estimate in the budget that they have. But even with that, we were still able to um have a uh. Almost a two million dollar uh decrease in its overall expenditures. So our. Putting it into our reserves is going to be two million dollars stronger this year. Um, than we originally anticipated and that goes to uh some of the consulting costs were a little bit lower. Um, and and just some of the other expenditures were a little bit lower. So it was nice to see that. Uh, our expenditures are lower than anticipated and that WCE is still doing good. WCE is still, like we've always said, providing energy at a lower cost than than SCE is uh currently. So, um, that's all the update for WCE. And then also on JCSD, just real quick. We haven't met, but uh you may have seen that JCSD is doing a uh drive in movie in the park. And that will be at Eastville Community Center and I believe it starts on the sixteenth or seventeenth, whatever Friday. Um, or eighteenth, I believe, it starts September eighteenth. If you go to their website, you go to their social media, there'd be all the information on there and it's gonna be for, they have it set right now to run for four weeks. And there's different movies that are gonna be each Friday. Uh, there is a cost to that. And there is a cost to that because of the new equipment that they had to purchase. Um, there is a discount for Eastville residents. And you can contact JCSD to get that discount code for for that event. Um. And that's Friday flicks and video, flicks and food trucks. So there's gonna be food trucks that are gonna be down there too and they're gonna have. Uh, different ones. It is gonna be in compliance with all the the COVID regulations, so social distancing. The food trucks are gonna be, for the most part, they'll be app based ordering. So you'll just go up to the food truck just to pick up your order. And won't have to congregate at the food trucks themselves. So. Uh, it, I think it'll be a great event and it'll be a a fun time for our community to get out and enjoy something social distanced. So. Look forward to that. That's all that we have for JCSD right now.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Mayor Protem Yau, uh, Western Riverside County Regional Conservation Agency.
Um, we have not met. It's been a few months, actually. We haven't met um in a few months.
All right, thank you. Uh, finance committee, uh, we'll have our next finance committee on this coming Tuesday, September fifteenth at four thirty. So feel free to join us in our finance committee, myself and Councilmember Loramore. All right, we'll go around with the with the city council communications and we'll start with uh Councilmember Loramore.
Yeah, we talked out. Thanks.
Awesome. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Rigby.
I'll make up for it. Uh, Jason, you've been great. Like Brandon said, it is one of those things that. I'll make up for it. Uh Jason, you've been great. Like Brandon said, it is one of those things that. You always have a smile and and you'll be missed, but uh you've done a lot in the city that I live. And then now you're going to be doing a lot in the city that I work, so um my office is there in Brea, so you'll you'll still be taking care of me and. Um I don't know, maybe you'll see me at one of the meetings there sometime, so but we wish you the best. Uh thank you for all that you've done for the city here. We we really appreciate all that you've done, so thank you. One area that, I just want to touch upon just a couple of quick things. One area that uh has been a concern, that staff has done a great job in working on, that our residents are concerned and we're having a tough time with. Is the the encampments that we have along the fifteen freeway. Um RSO has done a great job, Cal Fire has done a great job, but it's just been tough because we don't have necessarily the support from the state right now. So um I just want to fill in the council members that staff is is doing all they can. Once again. When I say staff, I'm also including RSO and Cal Fire that they're responding down there. Um unfortunately, it's it's utilizing some of our resources that I don't think should be. Um focused as much on there and the reason they're being focused and the time is being spent on there is because. We can't do anything. Our hands are tied right now. Um but just so my my colleagues know that staff is working on it. Uh myself and our city manager have been in contact with uh Brad West from Assembly Member Cervantes' office. Um told us last week that they would have an update the end of next or end of last week and then told us this week they'd have an update the end of this week, so. Uh our city manager sent an email off today asking if there's any way that we can expedite that because we've been working on this for months now with no progress. And it's not no progress on the fault of any of our city staff or any of our city partners. It's um unfortunately no progress because our hands are tied from the state, so. Bring it up for two reasons. One, just to fill my colleagues in if they weren't familiar with it, but then also number two reason is, is as residents. If you have a concern about this, feel free to email us, contact us. But also feel free to contact our state representatives to see what help we can continue to get from them. Uh but once again, thank you staff for doing that. We had uh the public comment, I just wanted to touch upon just briefly, the public comment that was shared this evening at the beginning. There's a part in there that I really wanted to stress that I don't know if anyone else caught. But when the gentleman came up and spoke, he said that, um in fact, his wife said it also, said that we were, that I was. Uh that the the deputies handled it professionally. Um I appreciate our deputies. I appreciate what they do, the examples that they set. They set the example when they dealt with the protests here in the city of Eastville, the the very peaceful protests. Um this is another prime example. This is another prime example that they dealt with him professionally. That came from him. I mean, you can go back to the beginning of this and they, that's what they said. Um so just want to say thank you to our law enforcement. I mean, there are always areas that we can improve, as he he shared. Um and there's, that's why within the law enforcement industry, they're constantly being trained on different things that they can do to continue to improve, so. I just wanted to to touch upon that and say thank you for the professionalism that our law enforcement does. Does portray here in our city. We received an email and I think my colleagues received it also from someone in regarding a potential resolution to. Um to have the city uh put out. And I don't know if it's something that my colleagues want to pursue or want to do, but I just wanted to throw it out there. I'm all in favor of it, of just retaining local control. There was a resolution that was put out, um I believe by a member of uh Long Beach. Um and I can send it out, but there there was, they're just trying to really push. For cities to retain local control. I think it's important for us to retain local control. Um but if if my colleagues are in favor, I would love for us to have some sort of resolution saying that. We we want to retain local control. That's what we have our council for. That's what we have our staff for, is to give us guidance on our local control. Um of what we can do here within our city, so I don't know if that's something that our our council would be in support of. Of continuing to have local control and and have a resolution in regarding that. I don't know if 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 there's a consensus to have that brought back or if it's something of interest of the council.
Any comments to that?
And it was actually from Torrance. It was a Torrance Councilmember, Mike Griffiths, that kind of is starting this.
Would you mind, I it's probably in my inbox, would you mind just just sending that email to me? Probably like lost in there. That would be really helpful.
Sure, I will do so.
Thank you.
So Councilmember Rigby, uh this is Clint. Yeah, I I I I saw, I saw a similar email and um. A- as you know, uh yes, absolutely, local control um is that drumbeat that. All council members, I believe, uh you know, it it's core to what we do. And the state has continually um been doing its best to uh curtail. Local control, which is extremely infuriating, particularly when many of these. Legislators uh come from a city council background, uh so it's always been a head-scratcher for me. Um a- as you know, the 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 mantra of the League is exactly that, maintaining local control. And SCAG uh as well, um both of which we are, we are members. I I must admit, I did not go to his website and uh but I I did read through his his email, yes. But the premise of local control, um I am a hundred percent. And if I could be more, I I would be in support of that. My hesitance is um whe- whether. Uh I I I I that I didn't read past his email. Um to see if there there was something more than what he was suggesting about local control. Um and what the organization stood for, so um. Yes, in in premise, I I I support the idea of putting together a resolution. Just to, I would like to make sure that we scrub the, scrub the text of the sampled resolution. Um to make sure that it is in line with our our values and not somebody else's. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lorimer. Ms Vega, I just sent there, I'll send that to you and if, maybe if uh between you and and Brian. If you guys can just review that and see if we can have something brought back, that would be great. Thank you. The last thing that I had was just in regards to the um the state of the city that our city manager brought up. For those of you that are interested, just one last thing regarding that, those of you that are interested in donating, there is still opportunities to donate. And the the donations are, they're trying to get those in by September fourteenth because with it being virtual, there's pre-recordings that need to be done. Before then so that they can include all your information in there, so if you're interested in donating, sponsoring. Uh make sure you do that before September fourteenth. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers. Mayor Pro Tem Yao.
Um I not much on my end. The only thing is like census. Um it's the deadline, I I know the city manager had has mentioned this, but um just a reminder for everyone. The census deadline to to respond to the census questionnaire is September thirtieth. And if you do not want people knocking on your door, which I know a lot of our residents don't, myself included. Please respond either via online or um through phone call. And they will not be knocking on your door if you respond that way, so. That's um that's quite an incentive because I do not let people knocking on my door. But yes, um the deadline to do so is September thirtieth and remember to count your little ones as all babies and. Kids under five years old are often left out of the count, so parents, please do remember to count your kids as well.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. All right, I have no comments, so I think with that said, our meeting is now adjourned. And the next council meeting will be September twenty-third, twenty twenty at six thirty PM. Thank you.